It's 5:30. We will call this regular board meeting to order. Thank you for being here tonight. We invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will look for approval of the agenda. Robin?
I move approval of the agenda with the HR addendum. Second?
Thank you. Moved by Robin, seconded by Namal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on this evening to recognition of the audience. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and homeschool district for the record. Speakers must refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee or student by name. Vulgar or profane language will not be tolerated. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully but is not obligated to respond or debate to issues in this forum. This evening, we have four speakers who have signed up to address the board. Each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Upon conclusion of the allotted time, a chime will sound and the speaker is asked to conclude. If necessary, a final chime will sound 15 seconds later, signifying the end of the speaker's time at the podium. And just to add, this evening, on the advice of legal counsel, tonight, the board will not be taking testimony regarding any pending personnel disciplinary matters. As the ultimate decision matter in any pending disciplinary matters, the board must remain objective and review the facts as presented at any future discharge for cause hearings, should they occur. So I will now call our first speaker to the podium, which is Devon Stachinsky. Welcome Devon.
Good evening. So I'm gonna take a step back a little bit. I'm not gonna talk about this year. I'm gonna talk about last year a little bit. Because I was doing a little math in light of news. There are 13,800-ish school districts in the country. There were 349 instances of, let's just call it impropriety, last year. And Fargo had four of them, which is 1.1% of that 349. So just a little food for thought that we seem to have something going on that we need to actually go to the root of. But I want to ask a question about memo 129. I'm not great at segues, as you'll know. While reading this particular memo about equitable resources and planning, it was, a thought struck me based on some of the wording used in it. And the thought is, based on how definitionally things are used in this particular memo, I would like to know, and I know I won't get an answer because you guys won't respond anyway, but I'm just curious, which particular demographic do you choose to underserve the most? If you're shifting resources around to bolster, who's getting left out in the lurch? Just a thought. I mean, if we go by all the metric data for math and reading scores, it's pretty evident which groups you would be pulling particular resources from to bolster other areas. That said, in the name of fairness, you would think that it would be mostly an even distribution of resources. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Victoria Johnson.
Madam President, Member of the Board, my name is Victoria. First, I would like to say thank you, Robin, for taking the time to meet with me last and I get to know about you and what you do in our community. I really gain a respect for you and thank you for what you do in our community. So, thank you. I wanted to talk about what happened at the last school board meeting. And I want to say thank you for the district being transparent and calling me and explaining to me what had happened last school board meeting and talking to me. And I am a person that can honor if I'm wrong. I'll say, yes, I was wrong. So I did look at Robert's Rule of Law and I look at their newly revised, that yes, I could not yield my time to another speaker. So I am a woman enough to acknowledge that I was wrong. And so I hope that the district and this board will make sure that maybe doing a little clear educational during my conversation when I got a phone call and I just explained that I think that we are good to have some clarification because that could, may or may not happen in the future. So maybe the board having to set up something and be clear in that area so people understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Our next speaker this evening is Paul Moore. Welcome.
My name is Paul Moore. I live in North Fargo. I was gonna talk about memo 129. Kind of complimenting on what Devon said. I'm curious of what an equitable resource is exactly. I understand having equal resources, but I don't know how that's applied to end up equitable. Equitable is an outcome measurement, not an input measurement. The only thing I could come up with was, he called it fairness. I called it piling up resources on one group of students and ignoring several other groups in order to tip the scales towards this equitable result. The only way I can see getting equity is to bring down the students that are doing well. One way you get everybody to be equitable, much easier than making everybody smarter. The statistics from the tests, standardized tests, show that. I mean, there's a long way to go to both meet the standard and try to be equitable. It kind of leaned toward that the dumbing down might be the answer. How you empower students to both succeed and achieve equity. Some kids are gonna naturally be better at science. Some kids are gonna be better at math. Some kids are gonna be better at English. So I don't understand how you expect equity. And then, because we seem to be establishing policies here that you don't, won't communicate with the parents unless it benefits you, do you expect parents to help? Why should a parent be involved when a communication is only one way? I don't think students achieve their high academic results without parent involvement. Results two and three appear to be in conflict. Talks about budget and standards of effort, but both of them actually just talk about money. It doesn't necessarily say, maybe you spend as much money or less, and how does that achieve better test results? It's just basically comparing, oh, I spent money here and I get it that, and good. Now you have spent more money, check. So I guess I've achieved that goal. But it didn't actually say anything about getting better results.
Thank you, Paul. Our final speaker this evening is George Klin. Sorry if I said that wrong.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I just want to take this opportunity to address the board because of the reason of being to be in America is such an honor and privilege to be in this country. So I just bring my daughter, who's appearing to be a doctor, who wants to be a doctor in this country possibly. But she just sat the West African School Examination Council, which is equivalent to the GCE. If you guys have known what the GCE is. But the main obstacle is that she's 16 years old. But in my country, if she got the five credits, she's supposed to be in college. But she is just migrated to the United States. So I bring with me the academical proficiency. She was junior high school to senior high school. So I don't know for some reason if she will be allowed or get the permission for her to pursue her studies in this country because she was too enthusiastic to become a surgical doctor. So she's sitting right beside me. Her name is Massa Rashida King. So I got all the academical proficiency. So because she's 16, because I knew that some of the school system in America here, it all depends about age. But I judge that age is just a number. Because I know if she's smart enough to be in higher grade, to go to college at 16 years old, I think the state of North Dakota will grant her the permission to take the test, probably to what the possible outcome, probably she can place in a certain place. Because I know that some school system in the US normally start because of you are 16 years, you can't go to college right away. There is a process within, you have to start from that level because of the age equivalence. But if she's smart enough to get the ability to accomplish what other students or even 18 years old can accomplish at the age of 16, I think she is capable of taking the test and go to college. So I don't know if she can have the permission from the board to take the test, either the SAT or the acupressure exam, so that she can place for a level where she's capable of pursuing studies. So I don't wanna go further beside this one. So I'm looking forward to you guys to get any response from you as early response. Because she just entered the country for two, four days ago. But she's so, having so much excited about this country and she wanted to come here to explore the opportunities. So by means possible for me to come to America, it was really a privilege. And I went to the United States Army for a few months, but I didn't succeed. But when I came back, I wanted to go back. But unfortunately, I was having an injury that hurt me. But at the same time, I took the ASVAB test.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our report section this evening. Grant Kraft has indicated to me there will not be an FEA report. So we will look to Dr. Gandhi for superintendent report.
Good evening, board members. Just one second as I pull up my notes here. Couple of things just for our superintendent's report. One is, just wanted to use the opportunity of a public board meeting, if I could, to thank both the Board of Education's Negotiation Committee and the Fargo Education Association Negotiation Committee for at least tentatively agreeing to differentiating salaries for special education teachers as that continues to be one of our biggest areas of needs, even going into the 2023-2024 school year. Looking at a potential compensation increase upwards of up to $6,000 could really be a difference and something that we want to continue to advertise. And though we don't have a fully negotiated contract now, we're already late in the game for hiring and we wanted to be able to go on the record and say that we're just grateful for that consideration. Hopefully, that does become a finalized contract, but something that we can use now to, as a recruitment measure for individuals that might still be seeking a teaching position out there. So we are, as a district at least, heading towards a direction of really investing in the educators, working with our most vulnerable learners in an area where we have had high demand, knowing that if there's individuals that want to take a look at special education positions in Fargo Public Schools, please reach out to our human capital department or even look at the available vacancies that we have on our district website. A couple of other just quick announcements. Next meeting, July 11th, will be our reorganization meeting because of a prior commitment with my role on the National Superintendent's Governance Committee and Legislative Advocacy. I will not be in attendance, so Dr. Gross will facilitate the canvassing of the reorg piece of that meeting, but I will be available and I will call into the meeting as well. So that is it for our announcements at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. I will look for approval of the consent agenda. Jim?
I move adoption of the consent agenda with the addition of the HR addendum.
Seconded by Nikki. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the business section tonight. Our only agenda item is, this comes to us in memo 129. It's the equitable resource and planning monitoring. I believe that's you, Dr. Gandhi.
That is me. I will introduce this memo and then there'll be, a few of us are happy to answer any questions that you may have. So as you all know, that this was the first year of our refreshed strategic plan and we're following a new monitoring structure as well. Thank you to the board to help us identify what are some of those result policy indicators as we take a look at various aspects of our strategic plan that are monitored. So for Strategic Initiative Five, which really is focused on equitable resources and planning, we analyze our budget, analyze our standard of effort report, and analyze our staffing data. Like many of the other strategic initiatives this year, knowing that this is the first year of monitoring, when we got to the monitoring report, we may make some suggestions going into next year about different data points that we want to take a look at or suggest when we do the tweak. But we have tried to give a high-level summary of where we see some of our key accomplishments in terms of our resources and our budget, how we are equitably distributing our resources and then our standard of effort. And this is always gonna be an interesting strategic initiative to monitor because some of this is a chicken and egg situation as well. As a district, we will allocate the resources that we have, but we also know that the board and our community will drive some of the values. So oftentimes, equitable, equitability, or what's equitable and what's equal, sometimes those terms are interchanged and they shouldn't be, but also sometimes people's values and priorities are a little bit different as well. Some of the things that we've talked about in terms of challenges is that we know that when I look at our standard of effort compared to other like districts, we may, as a culture and as a community, choose to invest in a higher percentage of teaching staff than other school districts. We may choose to have smaller class sizes, which is a better, or what we believe to be a better experience for our students because that is what our community needs and deserves. And so those are gonna be some of the drivers of the work that we do as well. So you see in your board packet, some of the things that we've highlighted. If we need to make any changes to any of the indicators or to the strategic initiative going into next year, we'll certainly bring that back when we update our plan in the fall. But we will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'll just say, I appreciated reading this document and getting this update. Personally, I don't have any questions, but do other board members have comments or Melissa?
Yeah, I just want to echo the thanks. The one thing I did have a question about is what an equity audit would look like? If you had sort of parameters or if I missed that?
So not knowing fully where you're referencing in here, are you talking about like a general equity audit or for a budgetary equity audit?
Yep, under next steps. Bottom of page four.
Yeah. So there are parameters for an equity audit that we can take a look at from a resource lens. So last year or the year before, we, as a district, did a comprehensive equity audit. It was called, it was an equity audit from beloved schools, communities, designed for school districts. And they broke down equity in terms of, they did the audit in terms of leadership, policies, board, governance, finances and resources. I think some of the pieces that, when you look specifically around our resource allocation, as mentioned here in our next steps, would be to see, are there areas for room for improvement? So I've often been quoted saying like, our values should drive our budget. And if we believe that, I think the example that I just gave in terms of special education teachers, that's an opportunity that an equity audit financially would then show, are we spending more money with our learners that we need to invest in more? And if so, what are we doing for that? So hopefully, next year, if this contract goes through, that would be a key accomplishment on one of the equity measures that we put into place. But I think there's some of those concerns across the entirety of our budget and our resources. Buildings, what part of town you're in, what age, when do you update your buildings, facilities? I think there's different things that you can take a look at. But that was the framework we used a couple of years ago. And I think there's still a lot of findings and room for improvement from work that we can do from there, too.
Thank you. Robin?
In order to start the floor discussion, I'd like to, go. Do you have more questions?
I think we're just trying to make the motion so we can have discussion. Thank you. Thank you.
I move that we accept the reasonable progress that has been made on our S15 for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
Second.
You read my mind. Okay, moved by Robin, I believe seconded by Seth. Now I need discussion. Namal?
Well, I guess this is more like, thank you for putting this together because just reading it. As, I guess first I want to say thank you to Betsy. Is that right? Is that how you pronounce her? Missy, sorry. I apologize. Thank you. I really appreciate it, actually, all the presentation that you put together last time, including the question that I sent out. And some of my question is actually here. So I just, personally, just want to say thank you for putting this together because resource like this, they're so crucial, you know, and to make sure that all our students do have an equal opportunities. And then that's where we get to know where the gap is and so much more. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Greg?
Yeah, so I think a fairly common misconception is that using resources to achieve different outcomes is zero sum, which I don't think is necessarily always the case. And I would hope it isn't always the case, especially at Fargo Public Schools. Do you have more concrete ideas about how we can be efficiently using resources in a way that can achieve equitable outcomes in a way that isn't necessarily zero sum? I kind of know some of the answers to this, but I think it's useful to, you know, bring it to light in a public discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. This is one of my favorite questions because it's a great conversation that I love to have. At the end of the day, I think for us as a district, I think equity and equality are words that always get thrown out for kind of big picture items. And the most important thing that I think that we can do is, as a district, is identify where our values are and what we want to be our priorities and then make sure that the work that we're doing is aligned to that. So one of the pieces that we've really started doing this year, but will be going into more next year, is our strategic plan. What are we monitoring and how are we reporting out on the data? So I don't think that just, there should be a zero-sum goal for equitable resources. But I also do think that in the past, members of our community or even sometimes without clear delineation, we will take any data point that could be reflective of a snapshot of time at one point in our organization or even just be a piece of data that we use for our own growth and development. And then we utilize it to make an evaluatory decision on our organization or a staff member, and that's just not true. As you know and other board members know, there's so many data points in the work that we do. So I think to better answer your question, what I would say is that one of our pieces going into next year is going to be to take a look at aligning every aspect of our budget into each of the strategic initiatives and then making sure that the standards or the operational plan action items that we have in our strategic plan, we're not only tracking it by what are we completing and what are we not, but how much money or resources are we spending? That's gonna give us a better identity of, are we meeting? Does the allocation of those resources actually meet that result that we want in our strategic plan or not? And if not, what are the contexts around it? Do we need to change it or shift it or be more nimble as we move forward? So part of that will be an outward-facing dashboard that we're looking to identify some of those pieces and work on that. At the end of the day, to even get more granular, we work off almost a, you know, when you take away human capital, which is 80% of our budget, of which 60% is teacher salaries and benefits, we're working off about a 20% operating cost. And so when we're talking about equity across the system and across the board, there are experiences that we have in Fargo Public Schools that are just phenomenal experiences that help make our identity and make us such a great school district and what we are. And, but those things also come at a cost when resources are finite. We have extensive offerings of music program, which we've seen some phenomenal students and the success and what that's done to create a sense of belonging for them. Not having those programs and some of those opportunities would be a disservice to some of those students as well. But at the same point that we know that when you invest in one thing, you have to make sure that you're gonna be able to give somewhere else, you know. A general example I can give is that if we're gonna continue to have smaller class sizes or smaller schools, which is a great concept and a great thing that we do, then it's gonna potentially cost us more FTEs. So I don't want to sit here and say there's opportunities for growth or there's not. I think there's opportunities for alignment. What are the experiences that we want to offer? And I think as a board member and as a community, it's important to know that schooling is about student achievement and student experiences. Both are equally important and we don't always get to measure experiences on the achievement side, but we know that they have a significant piece as well. Our school student activities is almost 3% of our overall budget, but we know that the profound impact it has on our community and our students that participate in those activities and it can go such a long way. So being able to have those detailed conversations about what is it that we want to achieve? Are we aligned in how we get there? But what percentage of our resources or what are our action steps and are they actually getting there? I think are larger conversations. So I wouldn't want to just generalize some ideas today, but I think I want to take a look at building out a system where we can measure that and look at that on an ongoing basis.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Any other discussion questions? Okay, seeing none. Am- Okay, seeing none. Anne Marie, I'll have you call the roll, please. Clark.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Berklin?
Yes.
Newman? Yes, motion passes. We will move on to our board reports. Uh Greg, let's start with you this evening.
Quickly looking at my calendar to see if there's anything other than negotiations. We did have our CEA committee this morning. And uh that was, I think, um that was our last one before reorg. And I I I I enjoyed that committee about ten times more than I thought I would. So I think that's a testament to the the group that we had there. Um I think it was a um a pretty fantastic committee to be a part of. But yeah, pretty much negotiations has been everything since the last meeting.
Thank you. I know you guys have met quite a few times. Nikki?
Thank you. Um I had to look back at my calendar as well to see what we've wedged in between negotiations. Um governance was last week, last Monday. I attended on Wednesday the foundation, the FPS Foundation Board Meeting. Um several negotiations meetings and the reason CEA was this morning is because it was rescheduled because we had so many negotiations meetings. So um but wanted to get that in quickly and I guess that's about it for now.
Thank you, Tim.
We've had a governance committee meeting. I've been to a negotiating committee meeting. And I think there's another one tomorrow if I'm not mistaken. We had a planning committee meeting since we last meet met. We had an SEC board reorganization meeting. And the canvassing committee has completed contacting all board members. We'll be prepared to present our report at the next meeting. And just in case you're wondering, there are thirty-four days left to get door prizes before August first. And I don't know if you noticed, but Cast Clay, Coca-Cola, Pepsi and Loffler's all were happy tonight based upon our approval of the consent agenda. So if you don't know anybody else to contact for a possible door prize, and if you're listening, Cast Clay, Coke, Pepsi and Loffler's, August first is the annual employee appreciation picnic. And we'd like to show our appreciation to the Fargo Public School year-round staff. That's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. Robin?
Jim, you should work for a nonprofit and fundraising because that's how the business works.
He does.
True. Welcome to my world. Um I've only attended the governance meeting since the last board meeting. That is all.
Thank you, Robin. Seth?
Um let's see, on the fifteenth, I attended the FPS Empowers event at uh Fargo Brewing. And and then had a governance committee committee meeting on a federal holiday. We'll talk about that later. Planning committee on the twentieth, uh negotiations committee meeting on the twenty-first, along with negotiations on the twenty-first. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nemo.
Thank you. I just have a couple of thing that here, but not too much. So um I think this is important for me. I um said I'm so said I'm said I love to discuss about mental health. So I was able, on June fifteen, I was able to attend Suicide and Septon uh Prevention Coalition Meeting that that include Essential Health, Stanford and everybody in there. So it was very interesting. And you get to learn so much about the communities and what they're doing and all. And then also too, I was actually invited to Lion Club Fargo. I don't know. So it was very interesting. So um some of them know Dr. Gandhi. And um they were very excited to work with the Fargo Public School because of the um I guess the visions for the students. And then on June twenty-second, I was able to go to NDSU to be a part of a professional lunch. Um and then also too, on um June twentieth, sorry, I attended a planning committees and then I also went to the World Refugees Day. Um so many folks were there. They were just really talking about the refugees, how they came in, their stories, eating different kind of food uh from all over the worlds. It's always my favorite because that's where I feel like I get to be home. Um and then June twenty-seven, which is today, I was um I attended CEA. Then I get to meet with Dr. Gandhi and Dr. McKenna and Kwar, just talking about workforce. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
My report is mainly just about negotiations, committee meetings and sessions, and I think everybody's listed all of them, so I won't belabor that. Uh and then I'll just echo Greg's point. We had our final CEA meeting this morning, but that's been a really neat group to be a part of. So thank you, Nikki, and thank you everyone that's served on that with us.
And thank you too. That's my part too. I just what I really actually enjoyed it. You know, I I think that you were amazing share on it and and I appreciate you.
Thank you guys for that. Um yeah, I'll do a brief president's report. It was a quick turnaround. It seems like um on the nineteenth, we governance has met, as was stated, and I had my individual meeting with Dr. Gandhi. Planning has met. Uh I did attend the NDSBA Brunch and Learn, they're now called. Um and this one was about the Grand Forks Public Schools Mentor Center, which was really cool. It's a cool thing that they're doing up there. Learned a lot at that. Um I had a Kosh Committee Meeting. And then in the spirit of just highlighting positive things in our district, my son's soccer team finally played in the in Fargo. We had a tournament. They're usually traveling and elsewhere. And his fifth grade teacher carved out time of her life on a Friday night to come to his soccer game um with another Centennial teacher, actually. And it meant a lot to the entire soccer team. They all took pictures with them. Um teachers really impact our kids' lives. Uh that was definitely the highlight of the whole tournament is that two of their teachers came to watch them play soccer. So we appreciate their time. They didn't have to do that. And they were away from their families and um just goes a long way to shape our kids. So wanted to highlight that. Moving on to possible executive session for the purpose of negotiations. Seth?
I I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted in North Dakota Century Code forty-four dash zero four dash nineteen dot one and fifteen dot one dash sixteen dash twenty-two.
Second. Okay, move by Seth, seconded by Nikki. Any discussion? No. Anne Marie, I'll have you call the roll. Day.
Yes.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Berklin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Newman? Yes, motion passes. Do we need to move upstairs?
Um Rupak, do you need to?
Project.
Project anything? Okay.
Just reorganize the room here then.
And I believe we can just stay here.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, welcome back. It is 7:50. We are out of executive session. And we'll move on to affirm the regular meeting date. Our next meeting is July 11th. And without any further issues, comments, questions, it is 7:50 and we will adjourn. Thank you.